Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to this evening's study session, Monday, December 6th, 2021. I call this meeting to order at 5:34. Ms. Janun, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Badoun, Mr. Badoun, sorry. Ms. El Zayat?
Here.
Ms. Pauaz?
Here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminski?
Here.
Mr. Sabo?
Here.
Madam Chair, we're for him.
Okay, topics of discussion will be security. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Masalim and you can get us started.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Before I begin, I want to commend, and I will commend them again during the regular session during my superintendent commentary. I want to commend the Crestwood High School staff and team. Today and last week, you know, we've had different things come through on social media. And, you know, we assess all of those situations very closely. It's not, you know, a quick decision. I can tell you that between myself, Mr. Abdahadi and his team at Crestwood High School, the Dearborn Heights Police Department, you know, we were looking at things from 6:00 AM. And, you know, we were looking at where we were, so on and so forth. And when we decided to continue with the school day, we kicked in our security and safety protocol, next level. It's a level above, you know, where we are in a regular situation. I also want to thank the Dearborn Heights Police Department because now, I have received a few emails from people that said their children said they didn't see enough police. But I want to emphasize that many were not in uniform. You know, we had uniformed officers and detectives here. And, you know, they were here, they were walking the building. And the thing that I want to emphasize too is they're also here on a regular basis, not just when there's a situation as such. They walk the building now, and they stop by in the lunchroom, and they talk with students, they talk with staff. And I want to thank Chief Myers for his continued support and the entire Dearborn Heights Police Department. We are living in some times where we're constantly, you know, having to assess and reassess what we do and how we do it. But our first and foremost concern is always safety. When Madam President and the board asked me to change this study session to focus on security and safety, of course, immediately we did so in conversations with every board member here. You know, it was, what should we do and how should we do it? And, you know, in conversations with Treasurer El Zayat, you know, who is a direct line of reference for us with the Department of Homeland Security. So it's nice that we have somebody on the board with that direct line. I thought would be a very phenomenal opportunity, not for me to present or to discuss our security protocol, but for our building principals to. And I've invited all of our building principals this evening to talk about their security protocols, their lockdowns, and how that works. And because they're the ones that implement, train, ensure that we do what we need to do. Also, Mr. Radwan Awada, who is our supervisor of student services, he is directly involved in our emergency operational planning. And he's the one that brings, you know, everyone together and brings our resources together, such as Homeland Security, the Dearborn Heights Police Department, you know, Sheriff's Department, anyone that needs to be part of the conversation. This is some, this process has been a process that we implemented as the Crestwood School District. Prior to COVID, we were implementing and reviewing. This August, updated requirements came down to us from the state of Michigan, and we're updating all of that. Today was an example that we have things in place, and when people hear something, see something, or have a concern about something and bring it to our attention, we immediately kick those protocols in place. You know, so with that said, I'm going to, you know, invite our building principals up to the podium, and they're gonna probably come up one at a time. And I told them, you know, you don't have to reiterate what your other colleagues said. You can say, okay, we're doing what they're doing. But at our school, it's a, you know, a little, here's our adjustments that we make for these reasons. Also, the plan that Mr. Awada is working on, he's gonna discuss, you know, where they started, you know, what they've been doing since August, and ensuring that we're implementing what is required by the state. The document that each of our building principals is working on is 186 pages or something like that. Mr. Awada will correct me. It's a large document, because that's what we have to submit to the state. Once we have those approved, we will take those documents, narrow them down into a easy-to-read, few-page, you know, question, you know, few-page FAQ for the community, so they're aware of what's happening.
If I may, Dr. Masalim, how much detail will we be getting? How much are they able to say, and how much can be provided to the public?
So tonight, what you're gonna hear is what we train, what students and staff are told to do and how to do it. So it's not secretive, it's not anything that, it's a 10,000-square-foot view. And what I mean by that is it'll illustrate to the community, you know, our procedures and our protocols and our systems, when, God forbid, if there is a lockdown, there is an active shooter, or, because sometimes we have, you know, a lockdown, it's not an active shooter, but we have a lockdown because there could be a situation occurring at a neighboring retail store, and the police say, hey, you guys gotta lock down because we're looking for somebody. And they're also gonna discuss real quick, you know, disaster drills such as a tornado drill, fire drill, and an evacuation drill. So what they're gonna bring is, they're gonna bring to the community and to the board this evening their plan. Like, that we have these plans in place, that they are being reviewed, and drills are taking place. And once we complete the updated document from the state, we're gonna have more information that will be in a packet for the community. But what we're seeing, and Mr. Awada will speak to it too, we have many of the things already in place, but we've had to update them. And it's been a while since they've been updated. And I'm sure Mr. Awada will also, and I don't want to speak too much for him and the team, but they're also gonna talk about ALICE. What is ALICE? You know, and ALICE is the lockdown procedure that we follow. It's an acronym, and they will discuss that. And also, Mr. Awada will be discussing our future, you know, procedures, our tabletop activities, working with the Dearborn Heights Police Department on those tabletop activities, because they're our first responders, and how that connection and that communication between the city and the district are so crucial. And these last couple weeks, and even in, I remember when I first came in as superintendent, we had a situation, I think it was in my first month or so, and, you know, the chief and the team, you know, boom, right away, protocol jumped in. So the one thing about emergency planning that I'd like everyone to understand is, you plan, you plan, you plan. But if something does occur, you reassess and you plan more. And there is no 100% guarantee on anything. But what you're doing is you're guaranteeing that people know what to do. And you're always changing, you're adjusting. And there are some things, infrastructure-wise, that have come to our attention through this process that we're going to have to make some adjustments when it comes to infrastructure, talking about building and doors and things of such. And we're already talking about some quick fixes in those areas, not in terms of quick, where it's not needed, but quick in terms of it's doable, it works, and, you know, it's not going to be this massive overhaul of need. So through this process, these conversations, and then when we have the tabletop activities with the organizations, we'll learn even more. But ultimately, the idea right now is, God forbid, in any situation where we have to lock down, people know what they need to do. And then, on the other hand, too, there's things, this is a whole new world of social media. Social media changes constantly. And that is why I send out the messages I send in terms of asking parents to be aware of social media. Talk to your children about social media. See who their friends are on social media. You know, with this whole Snapchat thing, if anything, you know, they should be private. Nobody should be allowed to send them a post or anything unless they're friends. Because then what happens is, when you have an open social media account, anybody can send you a message, and you don't know who that person is. So it's a different world in terms of that, and it's gonna continue to change. And as it changes, we have to change. And that's why this emergency planning is a every fall, a review every winter, again, a review in the spring, and then again in the fall. And then drills throughout. Because things change, we have to change and stay abreast of it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Pauaz.
Will they be able to discuss, and I know you've sent communications of what parents are hearing, children are hearing, will they be able to go into any of that, or discuss the processes, or what steps they've taken for it? And would we be able to hear from law enforcement tonight, or no?
So we don't have law enforcement here tonight because our focus tonight is to talk about the school planning. Law enforcement piece comes into play when we call them in for additional support, in terms of, we receive a threat, now we need, you know, police support. Where that works is, when law enforcement comes in in a situation, we have our protocol and procedure. Law enforcement is aware of our protocol and procedure. They know what we're doing. When they come in, what ends up happening is, law enforcement then takes over the situation. And then they put their procedure and protocol in place, if there is an active threat. If they're investigating a threat, then the school is still in charge of what's happening in the school. So through the process, there is a communication tree. And through that communication tree, the needed individuals who need to be involved are informed immediately. And then that's when they come in. So with the tabletop activities, where that comes into play is, if, God forbid, you have a situation where you have a actual, you have a lockdown and you have an evacuation, where the tabletop activity comes in is the Dearborn Heights Police Department know, okay. This is their lockdown procedure, ALICE. So all Dearborn Heights Police are, they're training ALICE, so they know what we're doing with ALICE. And then, this is the evacuation site, okay? So they know where the evacuation site is, and they know where everyone is going when they evacuate a building. This is the reunification site, okay? They know where the reunification site is, and so on and so forth. That information isn't, you know, sensitive information, because everyone's gonna know that, because the kids are gonna know. So there is really no sensitive information that they're gonna need to share, because all of the information they're gonna share is public knowledge. If your child or your teachers-
To some degree. That's where I'm on the fence on that, I'm sorry. That makes me nervous, because I think that you have to have a fine line.
But again, the teachers and all of the students are gonna know what's going on. So it's not as if it's- I'm sorry?
Isn't it, wouldn't it be more of the adults?
No, everyone's gonna know where they exit. Everyone's gonna know where the evacuation site is. Everyone's gonna know where the reunification site is. You have to know.
Right, right, right. I'm just, yeah, I'm talking about the sunset, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about, once there's a lockdown, ALICE is in place, evacuation site, reunification site. That's public knowledge, because the kids are gonna know. The other things that happen internally in terms of who's doing what, some of those things, people aren't gonna know, because those individuals know what their role is. But that's where those tabletop activities come into play, to reemphasize and reinforce that. Because, you know, law enforcement may tell us, okay, Dr. Masalim, you were planning on doing this, but we recommend you do this. Oh, okay. You know, that makes sense, and we make those adjustments.
Okay, if we can, Mr. Sabo?
Yeah, just, first of all, thank you for everything that you guys have done the last few days. And I think, I won't speak on behalf of everybody, but I think I can on this. Our heartfelt condolences to the Oxford community for everything that they went through, and obviously, this is what's triggered this that we're going through right now. And you did mention a few things that you set up, and obviously, it has to be a very fluid scenario constantly, with change to the plan to make sure that we're always ahead of the game. But I do want to talk about these threats that are coming, not just to Crestwood Schools, but surrounding communities. And I know we can't get too in-depth, because law enforcement's involved.
Can we do that during board comment? Because I know that he wants the principals to present, and then Mr. Awada, and then you're free to have the floor.
It was a question, but that's fine, I can wait.
No, go ahead. If it's a question, go ahead. If it's a question, I just thought we were gonna go into more detail about other things.
Where are we in the process? And obviously, due diligence and respect for the process, but at the end of the day, full throttle on ensuring that this person is prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. Where are we with the process of finding out the people who did this? And what's next steps?
So we do our internal investigation with those students or individuals, or even whom are connected with those either chats or whatever. Like, we look at the string, and we do what we can to identify where the string started. Once we have that information, we turn the information over to the Dearborn Heights Police Department. The Dearborn Heights Police Department then does their full investigation and comes back to us with the information that they find. I will say this, and I have said it in the letters and the communications that I have sent home to parents. Any student who makes a threat, and if that threat is a threat that they mean to follow through on, or if it's a threat that they say was a joke, we will suspend, take to a hearing, possible expulsion, and we will prosecute.
Good.
I think it's fair to say, and I mean, I think the board would agree, that we are gonna go full extent on this. I don't think we're gonna sit back and just let these threats be made. Yes, we will expel. Yes, we will prosecute to the full extent of the law, because what has happened and the stress that has been caused to the staff members, first of all, to the board members, to the community, will not be tolerated. It was a very stressful day. I think I had to take three blood pressure pills today. So it wasn't fair to what happened to you guys, and we are not going to sit back as a board and allow that to go on. So you have our full support on that. And Mr. Awada, the same. We're not gonna sit back. Administration, you have our full support. We're not gonna let this go on. We're not gonna let education be disrupted on a daily or weekly basis like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, please.
Yes, Mr. Badoun.
We continuously talk about safety and well-being, but at the end of the day, I think it's the administration sitting over there that's on ground zero that our children's safety are with. I just want to speak on behalf of the entire board, I know, will support, that you are all empowered to do your job and to fully protect our faculty members and our children. So I know sometimes things are, you know, there's a fine line between what you can and can't do at certain points, but trust your training, trust your knowledge, and do whatever you see fit to protect everyone in the building. I think we all agree that they're fully empowered to do what they need to do.
Yeah, that's where the training will come in, along with the direction of Mr. Dr. Masalim, Mr. Awada, so hopefully, we can move on to the next step from here.
Thank you. So the first, I'd like just to turn it over to Mr. Awada real quick, just to give a quick, brief background timeline of what we've done since August, to where we are now and our next steps. And then, I will then ask Mr. Abdahadi to come up and talk about the Crestwood High School plan. And then, Riverside, and then we'll go down to the elementaries, and of course, you know, any questions that you have, we appreciate. So, Mr. Awada, I turn it over to you.
Good evening, President Berry, Board trustees, Dr. Masalim, Dr. Lazar, Ms. Penny Morgan, administrators and community. Are you hearing me okay? Just want to confirm before I start.
You're good.
Awesome. Thank you. I truly want to first begin by thanking the Crestwood School Board, Dr. Masalim, and the district's leadership team, students, parents, for their continued commitment to safety and security within our district. Understandably, after the Oxford incident, everyone is on heightened state of awareness. Unfortunately, we have those individuals who are making threats. And as Dr. Masalim has stated, those individuals will be held accountable and prosecuted to the full extent of the law. And that is not a threat, it is a promise. I thank and commend Dr. Masalim for his steadfastness, leadership, and proactiveness with our safety and security. We've been on top of our safety and security plan since August. We are developing at every school an emergency operations plan that, as Dr. Masalim has stated, is 197-page document. It's very extensive, it's very detailed, and it prepares all staff, all students, and all schools for any emergency incident, not just an active shooter incident. I want to say special thanks to the Dearborn Heights Emergency Manager, Mr. Lee Gavin, Police Chief, Mark Myers, Fire Chief, David Brogan, Chief of Staff of Homeland Security and Emergency, Ms. Danielle Zayat, UnderSheriff, Mike Jaffar, Emergency Manager of the Michigan State Police, Mr. Nate McQueen, and Michigan State Police Lieutenant Farhad Qureshi for their support and providing expertise in emergency operations planning as well. Work has been ongoing since August. We've had extensive efforts by the school administrators to strengthen existing partnerships, to revise and reformat their plans to accommodate any emergency incident. We appreciate the local, the county, and state authorities, their partnerships, and strengthening their partnerships. It's in full motion. We want to simply thank all the school administrators and crisis teams for their attention to detail, and their efforts and dedication to the students' and staff's safety. I'm, I will be conducting a meeting, we will be conducting a meeting, with local, county, and state first responders who coordinate under the NIM system, which is the National Incident Management System. And our entire intent is to, number one, come up with short-term goals for the district and the staff, and also long-term goals for our district and staff. We want to assess our infrastructure needs, make sure we have everything in place, so first responders are able to do their job. We want to remove any impediments that they may have, or obstacles that they may incur upon responding to a critical emergency incident, and want to make sure that our community, rest assured, we are doing everything in our power to make sure that the students, and the staff, and the parents remain safe times within the Crestwood School District. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can. And thank you.
If I may, Mr. Awada, I'm sorry. When is this first meeting taking place?
Our initial meeting will be Wednesday, December 8th. It will consist of local, county, and state authorities, the emergency manager, emergency manager from the city of Dearborn Heights, the emergency manager from the state of Michigan, lieutenants from both the city and the state and the county, all trained in ALICE. Will be helping us develop a formidable plan to provide training for staff. And this training will not be a one-and-done. It will be ongoing and continue as year in and year out.
Thank you for that information. Ms. Kaminski?
Just clarification. Mr. Awada, I know you guys have worked really, really hard since August and have been revamping the system. I don't want the community to think that we didn't have a system prior to August. We were one of the earliest districts to do ALICE training for everybody. We do have SROs in the building. We do have blue line security, and we did have a plan in place that obviously needed to be readdressed and needs to continue to be readdressed. But this has been an ongoing process with a greater emphasis since August. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
If I may, thank you, Trustee Kaminski, Vice President Kaminski, is you're 100% right. And August was, again, every fall, we reevaluate.
Right.
And in August, we started reevaluating again and updating our procedures based on updated requirements from the state. So, and you're 100% correct. We had things in place prior, we're just making them better.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from this side? Any questions? Okay. Thank you for providing us with that information. And Dr. Masalim, are we-
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Awada.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
And I'd like the community to know that's watching. Mr. Awada, you know, you always have to have somebody that is the glue, you know, brings things together. He's been my right-hand person when it comes to our EOP, our emergency operational planning for our district.
Well, he's impressive, because he already has everybody in place that needed to be done. So you've been working hard at this, I bet, Mr. Awada. I don't know if he hears me.
No, I do. Thank you, President Berry. And again, it's Dr. Masalim's proactiveness, the Board of Education's proactiveness, and making sure every student who attends Crestwood School District feels safe and secure. And every staff member working within our district feels the same. And we appreciate your support and steadfastness and willing to provide anything that is needed to ensure all the basics are in place, and we are able to respond effectively to any scenario.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. El Zayat?
I just wanted to take a minute and thank Mr. Awada for all the effort he's put in over the past few days here. I know that it's been a little bit crazy for him. And then, in light of what happened today, too, was crazy on top of crazy. So I just wanted to say thank you, and we appreciate all your efforts. And you're doing a great job.
You're very welcome. It's a team effort, that's for sure.
Thank you.
If we're hiring, I'll let you know.
Hey, anyhow, moving on. So I'd like to invite Crestwood High School Principal, Mr. Abdahadi, to talk briefly, give an overview of the crisis planning at Crestwood High School. Mr. Abdahadi, and again, I want to reiterate, Mr. Abdahadi was, he was in charge today, and he made sure things were getting done correctly, him and his team, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Masalim. Good evening, board members. Thank you for having us up here, and thank you again for all the support with everything we have to do on a daily basis. Thought you wouldn't be able to do any of it. Dr. Masalim mentioned earlier about our crisis planning, and he mentioned the word evolve, and that's what they are. And as, you know, chaotic as things seem today, there was a lot of learning that happened. And we can take an event like today, and we learn from it. In fact, you know, I had a staff meeting planned, but we kind of tabled what was on the agenda, and we gave the staff opportunity to revisit today. Let's look at what happened today, what worked out really well, what can we tweak, evolve to make better, and what are some ways we can improve it. And that's what we did during our staff meeting. So we learned from today. Now, when talking about our crisis plan, you know, generally, you're talking about your fire evacuation plan, your disaster plan, and your evacuation lockdown plan. With the disaster, you know, tornadoes, every teacher in every class has a protocol, and they have one of our emergency plans with them, within their classrooms. They know exactly where to go in the building, how to take, allow kids to move through the building to get to where they need to safely. And that's pretty much, and they wait for all the signals over the PA of what they have to do next, when we're talking about the disaster. When you're talking about the evacuation, same plan. They know their routes, they know where to head out of the building for an evacuation, and where to get to outside the school, and the next steps and how to let us know that all students have been accounted for, and so we can make sure that all of our students are safe. Today wasn't necessarily a lockdown drill, but when we look at our lockdown drills, we have two of them. One of them is what we call a normal lockdown, a soft lockdown. That's if something's happening outside of the building. Let's just say hypothetically speaking, a robbery in a store. We go into what we call is a soft lockdown, and that's when the staff knows over the PA what the alert is, and they are to lock their doors, remain in their classrooms with normal business, the instruction. And they remain in there until we tell them or alert them that it's safe to leave the classroom or to conduct the normal day's business of the school, letting kids out. Well, and then you have the ALICE lockdown. And that's what occurred today. Well, not necessarily occurred today, but that's what staff is trained to do when things like of this nature with a threat. I know, like Dr. Masalim said, we got the email very early in the morning, and right away, my administrative team, along with the support team, received texts from me and what the plan was. The first thing we did when we got into schools, we met as a team, and we put a plan in place, and put our protocols in place of what we needed to do and how we were going to do it. Teachers were also informed of the plan and what they needed to do early in the morning. We remained calm, we worked together, and we, you know, we did what we needed to do. The crazy thing at the end of the day, when we reflect on it, is that we did have a lot of students whose parents were picking them up from school and calling them out. But if I could say, an estimated maybe 400 kids ended up leaving the building. That's an entire elementary school. But if you ask the rest of the students and the teachers within the building, no one knew what was happening, but the people in the front office, the people dismissing the students. Board trustee Kaminski referred to the staff being trained in ALICE. All of our teachers are trained in ALICE. And in fact, some of our teachers are trainers of trainers in ALICE. And we did review this earlier in the year at one of our PDs, going through the whole protocol and what teachers needed to do. And we get their insight on how things run in the classroom and how we evolve that plan. We're always working together. So when there is a lockdown, obviously, teachers put into place the ALICE lockdown protocol. So when there is a lockdown, obviously, teachers put into place the ALIS lockdown protocol. They are, we alert them over our PA systems. Our PA systems, with the work of David Green, are going to be patched into all of our classroom phones, so we can communicate through that manner. Teachers and staff are in the, they clear kids, any kids in the hallways for those emergency procedures, they lock down the doors. All doors are locked from the inside. Some of our staff, we have ordered mechanisms to allow them to lock the doors, so they will not be allowed to be opened from the outside. And the teachers wait, they turn off the lights, there's posters on, we're putting posters on every window that allows you to look into the classroom, so that way, any intruders or anyone in the building that's not supposed to be in the building cannot see into the classroom. Now, if you've been into Crestwood, I'm sure all of you have, there's a lot of windows within Crestwood. All our doors that lead into our courtyards that are all glass around are all locked, so there's no access from inside the building into those courtyards to allow anyone to see into those buildings. If someone ever should make their way into those, there's stoppers at those doors, and there's blinds on those inner windows. Staff knows that the outer window for the windows of the building are to remain open so authorities can see outside, from the outside coming in.
If I can ask a question, I know that, wasn't there a grant that was given, I think it was before Mr. Abdallah got there, where they had that film for the windows? Did that ever, was that ever installed where you can see one way and not the other?
Not, no, there was no film. Some of them have, not all of them. I'm talking about, like, if you're in the courtyard, so there's windows looking into the courtyard.
Correct.
So you can see into classrooms. Those are the windows that already have blinds there, there are some films on some of the rooms, but not all of them.
So that is something we're considering, though?
We haven't thus far. Again, we're still, you know, we're still assessing all the buildings in terms of the infrastructure needs, but the film is something that we can definitely, when we have our conversations, see if it's doable with what we have.
Okay, thank you.
So after everyone in the room to secure, like I said, we have the mechanism to lock the doors, the teachers understand through ALIS protocol to barricade those doors and wait for signals for evacuation. Once we have, and within, I'll explain a little bit later, but once there is that evacuation signal, we have two, a primary and a secondary site for evacuation. Our primary is Islamic Institute on Ford Road, and at that institute, we plan to have bins with classroom, the rosters of all students, first aid kit, tourniquets, and that's all sealed in a bin at those locations. Our secondary site, we're hoping is to work with Elite Sports for our students to be released over there. Initially, it was Kenlok, but we figured if we were in a lockdown, more than likely they would be in a lockdown, so that wasn't going to work, so our secondary evacuation would be Elite Sports. Have those discussions with them. And then, so once they get to those sites, like I said, they have the bins there, everything's ready to go, but with our teachers, each one of our teachers has these bins with them, or bags with them. Within the bag is, obviously, they're, let me go over some of the things. They have this binder with the roster, with the plans, the school map, and with all the pertinent information that they need from this binder. They have first aid kits, flashlights, ice packs, Band-Aids, scissors, bandages, cold packs, those are all, every one of the kid bins, and they have these with them in their to-go bags.
So can I just ask, so every classroom teacher will have that?
Every classroom teacher has one of these bags with them. And then there's two bins, like I said, will be at the evacuation sites with more detailed information of the students, the parents' contacts, actually, yeah, the parent contacts, tourniquets, compression bandages, and those types.
Thank you. Ms. Kaminski?
If I could, Mr. Abdallah, this is something that the teachers had prior to today, correct?
Yes, 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 but we always look at it, you know, like we said, evolve and we add things to it. We've made some updated changes to our room numbers and our maps in the building, so all that stuff has been updated within the bin.
And I just wanted to do that, not for this group, but for the community to understand and be aware.
If I may add real quick, my apologies. One of the first things that Mr. Abdallah did when he came into Crestwood is he redid the numbering system inside the school to make it much more easy and accessible and make it a little bit more cohesive, and that was part of the, you know, that was in August, when the conversations first started. So it's that constant reevaluation of what we have.
In fact, yes, we renamed all the hallways, A through E. We renamed, redid the numbers, so now there's a flowing system of a section of 100 rooms, 200 rooms, and 300 rooms. So it's a lot easier for people to know where they're at in the building, where they're going.
Yes, Ms. Valas.
A couple of questions. So would you be, based off what, either for Mr. Awada or you, based off what you guys have done and what's transpired in the last week up to today, do you, are you compiling a list of, like, shortfalls or things that need critical attention versus maybe longer-term attention? And then, my second question would be, how would you guys handle, like, substitutes probably that are in the building, that are probably not trained like our staff is trained? Like, would we go to just a certain group that we know has the same training as our people, or how would you handle that? Or is there, like, a quick tutorial for them when, before they start, or like, I guess, what would be the process?
Okay, so not that there's a quick tutorial, but what we do is, every week, I have a weekly meeting, you know, my week plans are, you know, meet with my admin team, meet with my counseling team to look at things, meet with my security team, meet with the support team. So these are the things we visit. So in the initial meeting, when we have with our support team, they are assigned to, as soon as they come in, or we know that there's a situation that we kind of need to, aware of and monitor, they are placed and they have a task to align themselves with certain members that might be coming into the building, whether it's parents, whether it's subs, or whether it's visitors.
I mean, like, would the substitute know that there's a first aid bag in the classroom? Where it's located?
Of course. When we give them their folders, all that information is in within their folders.
Okay. And then, are you guys making, like, a list of things that need to be addressed immediately or longer-term, or like, for us to help in any way we can? You know what I mean, like?
Yes, yes.
A summary, I guess?
Yes, we are. We'll send you the bill and information soon. But what we did, like I said today, we took this opportunity to learn from it, we, as a staff, and I told you, I created a graphic organizer, asked them what worked, what could we do better, and how are we going to improve it? And I told, you know, I told my staff, there's no hurt feelings here. This is a chance for us to learn, and if I could do a better job, my team could do a better job, I want to hear about it. And so they did that, and they gave me suggestions on what they learned, what they have, what they're missing, and what we could do to make it better, and that's what me and my team will bring back when we meet and say, hey, this is what we need to get taken care of.
Thank you.
So, first of all, thank you. Very extensive, very detailed, awesome. Is there anything that you feel that you lack from a resource standpoint? And this is probably a question not only to you, but everyone that runs a building. Is there anything that you feel you lack that you want to bring to our attention that we can try to help with? And you don't have to answer today, but if there is, please get back to the board, and we'll be sure to address.
Definitely, I appreciate it.
I'm going to ask you to tell Dr. Masalim.
Well, I will, I will say this, and they're very honest, like, don't tell me, ah, you don't know what you're talking about. Anything that they ask for when it comes to safety and security, immediately, we implement, and we get taken care of.
First of all, it gets approved first.
Yeah.
Mr. Sabal?
Again, like everybody else said, thank you for everything that you did today. Just the recovery sites, a little bit of concern with the distance for the first recovery site in the Islamic Institute of America, which ideally, it's a big facility, but there's got to be something closer where the kids can run to.
I can answer that.
I'm not saying adjacent, I'm not talking about Canfield. I know he mentioned Elite. I think you need to have more than one site, maybe Greenland, our friends at Greenland, I know would be very supportive, God forbid something happened. I just, the distance between the Islamic Institute of America and the high school, I think is a bit far.
Well, I think also, when you're looking at the amount of students, that's, you have to have a place to be able to hold all those students, first of all, and then, second, we also, based on the guidelines, some places might be too close, and you need to get further away. It's my understanding, Mr. Awada, if you can speak to that, you're more than welcome to, but I feel like the sites have to be a little bit further away, because I know our old site used to be Divine Child.
It's a bit far.
Yeah.
That's fine, it's really far.
And I think if you go from the back, it's not as far, if you're thinking of Down Beach Daily, Down Ford Road, as opposed to the back parking lot goes right to Kenlok, and that's at the side street.
Let's let Mr. Sabal finish, please.
Yeah, I was just talking about, and you're right, but there's still two or three football fields before you get to the end in distance, and then another three or four football fields to it. I just think we need to talk to the community, because the support we have in this community is phenomenal from all our business owners. And I know Mike Maccatell, Elite Sports, would be all about it, but again, that's close.
Yeah.
You know, do you want something that close?
Yeah.
So, you know, we just, we need to have a strong contingency plan with the facilities closest to, right? And I know Kenlok's off limits, and I'm sure Wise would be off limits, because that's another school they're going to be in lockdown, too, if something happens. So just have that tidied down a little bit is all I would ask, please.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would think that the security team that's meeting and such, would they advise on that, Mr. Awada?
Absolutely, and that's why we're bringing in the experts. We're going to learn from them, just as much as they learn from us about our district. We're looking for their expertise and their feedback regarding our existing emergency operations plan, in addition to providing alternatives, because it's not just the evacuation site, it's going to then extend to the reunification site as well, and where we bring students and parents together. And that's going to be all logistically worked out with our expertise in the local county and state departments.
I'm sorry, Ms. Alzayat, did you have something?
I just wanted to add that, you know, with any plan, you'll identify all your gaps when it's exercised, when you test that plan, and then I would definitely take Trustee Sabal's points here, and if it's identified as being, you know, too far, or not the right place, not the right fit, and something better, I would definitely have you guys pay extra special attention to that, with all those kids trying to get to that one place.
Definitely.
Okay, Ms. Jenoon, go ahead.
Initially, I had the same concern, and I just think that with, again, I'm sure that you guys will figure that out, but that was my initial thought as well, but I don't know what else or where else within that area works, but again, there are certain guidelines, I'll, you know, I'm sure you guys will bring it back to us. I was just wondering with the door locks, the ones that, did we, because I know when I asked Dr. Masalim about those, I had a parent who had seen that they had used them, you know, at Oxford, unfortunately, that they had to actually, you know, put that into, you know, use them for the doors, but do we know, do you know which ones we're using? Because there's certain types that take like a couple of seconds to install, or are they at the top, at the bottom of the door?
That's one of the things we're researching right now.
Okay, you haven't actually ordered them?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, I thought you had said that you had...
No, no, we worked, I met with our custodial engineer, and I had brought up some suggestions of what I thought might work, and he had told me, there's a couple of them that are quicker, better options, let me look into them, and I'll send them to you, and then we plan to order them.
Because whatever we order for one school, we're going to do for all schools.
And that's what I was going to ask, Ms. Sabal.
So we're researching the different, different kinds of locking mechanisms
Right.
that are quick and easy and an extra level of support.
Okay.
But all of our doors, and this is part of the process, we ask, and Mrs. Morgan asked all of the head custodians of every building to go through and check all the doors and check all the locks, to make sure everything is where it's supposed to be and how it should be, and we're making some additional updates, you know, but that's part, that was prior, you know, that's part of the process. But for the additional locking mechanisms, we're researching to see what will work best for us, because it would be in addition to what we have.
Right, so then the staff then will have to be trained on how to install those if needed, and then again, obviously, if there's a sub, but, and then making sure that the lists for the students that are in each bag are updated if you have a student drop a class or somebody added. I mean, is there, like, where you go over to make sure that the lists that are in each emergency bag are updated for each class? There was something else that I was going to ask. Oh, so when we had walked the building in the beginning of the year, there was something mentioned about it being against the law now, I thought, to cover the windows, I thought that you wanted to make sure that, so is that not the case?
No, we don't cover exterior windows.
Not exterior, I'm saying the classroom windows.
Interior?
Yeah. I thought that you didn't want to cover them so that you could...
So we don't want to cover them during instruction time, but if, God forbid, we're in a lockdown.
Okay, so it's not something that's going to be up all the time?
No, it's not supposed to be up all the time.
That's, okay, because I know that that's...
Yes, and that's something that we're working on across the district. That's one of the areas that we have to improve on.
Okay.
I'll be honest, you know, that's...
That's fine, no, I just...
And thank God it's something that's simple?
Yeah.
Because that's, that's simple to fix.
I just, I was, didn't understand that you meant throughout the day.
Yeah, there's no law, it's not about a law, it's the recommendations.
I apologize.
No, why are you apologizing? No, I just wanted to make sure that people don't think it's a law, that's all.
Ms. Kaminski, did you have something?
I just wanted to make sure, currently, all our doors do lock.
Yes.
On the inside, because I know we updated that probably four years ago or five, and we even had to switch the way some of the doors swung in order to change the locks.
So the way the doors swing, that's, that's a different conversation.
Okay.
But in terms of the locks, every door locks.
Thank you.
And what we're talking about is an additional locking mechanism.
Perfect.
So in addition to what we have.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Abdallah?
No.
Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate all the information, and we know you've been working hard at this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Abdallah. So next, I'd like to invite up Mr. Caseball, Principal of Riverside Middle School. Now, he's not going to repeat everything Mr. Abdallah said, but now he'll...
There's nothing left. So the buffet, there's not even dessert, so well done. Now, good evening, Madam President, entire board, central office, personnel, Mr. Awada. I will talk briefly that here at Riverside, obviously, with the fire alarm and the disaster or the tornado drill, the staff and students are very clear on what those sounds are and where to go, whether it's outside the building or inside the building for those. We do have one unique situation with one of our beautiful fifth graders, a young lady who has a special medical condition. We've already had a couple drills this year where we've worked with the fire department. We have specific plans identified and that we practice in regards to the evacuation plan when the building would have no power or no elevator, like is currently the situation, or if it's a real fire. So we've executed that plan flawlessly. She has a condition that just, you have to be very, very careful with, and both the school and the community resources have performed very well for her so far. So that is a special situation that we've taken care of. Our lockdown drills do operate the same way as described with the soft and the hard by Principal Abdallah. evacuation plan is a little different. We also have an emergency bag, it's more of a black and orange backpack, very much similar contents in there with the folder, with all the information that he had mentioned, and also the first aid supplies that are provided, as well as working flashlights and batteries and such. Our evacuation site is the Salvation Army, just down Warren Road here. Ironically, we did just through the EOP process, we just made contact with them. When I found this paperwork, when I first arrived here at Riverside, I thought, there's no way that the same people would be there, but they are. So the contact information is the same, and the telephone information, alternative contacts have been checked. They're very willing to be welcoming to us. We hope that we never, obviously, have to execute that, but we are prepared. Where our fifth grade classes are going to enter the building and go, same thing for sixth, seventh, and eighth. We have identified the assembly areas, and we also are prepared for the parents to come and that process to pick up the children. I do have questions regarding busing, but that's something that our safety committee is going to work on, as well as other questions, that's kind of where we're at in the process. The one thing that I will say, new to the district, but I am very impressed, number one, with the commitment since the beginning of the year... very impressed, number one, with the commitment since the beginning of the year, uh, that we've been working on this, and I know if you've seen that packet, um, the, the committees and the people working on it, and Mr. Awada, under his leadership, they deserve, they've put a lot of hours in, into that document. But I have never felt as prepared as a principal as I do here now, standing before you, and I also feel confident in the team around me, not just my administrative team, but the teachers and everyone involved with it, where God forbid, we would have to, you know, implement one of these, uh, situations. I, I definitely feel confident in my team that we could pull this off safely and execute it. Um, I want to say flawlessly, but we know, like we've discussed, uh, there's a lot of moving parts to these things. For the drills that we conduct here, whether it's a fire dr- drill, a disaster drill, uh, lockdown, whatever it is, we always send a survey to the staff after. Uh, we've done that, uh, since I've got here, and we get feedback from them. People have told us previously, my door is, you know, not locking correctly, uh, I need something for the window, those types of things. So it's been a very collaborative, uh, communicative, uh, uh, collaboration process. And like I said, the most important thing is, you know, I look at myself, do I feel prepared? Those are the questions I ask myself. If I feel prepared, does my team feel prepared? And I, I think that we are. So again, thank you for your support, always, uh, through this process and over the past couple days, as, uh, we value the community's children, and every day that they walk through that door, we want to be able to feel safe and focus on education. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Any questions?
Yeah, just a question, and, and, you know, for the elementary school principals, I'm going to ask you the same question, so if you can address it ahead of time, please. I think the younger the student, the more concerned I get, because they don't have the sixth sense that you develop as you, as you get older, as you're nurtured through life. What's the plan? Because I know eighth graders are going to respond totally different than the fifth graders, and being in this school of four levels, it's a really weird age, you know, it's an unusual age for kids that, you know, they're just at different stages. How are you preparing the teachers from fifth grade through eighth grade to handle things like this? And are you going to get a fifth grader to run down to, you know, the Salvation Army, the, the same way you're going to get an eighth grader to get down there?
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked that, because we're actually planning to do that walkthrough, to actually walk them through the process. So like Dr. Mussum at the, said at the very beginning, you know, there's, there's no secrets to this. We're going to actually execute that plan and explain to them so they're comfortable as we go through. Again, God forbid that we ever have to execute that plan. They'll feel confident in knowing what it is they have to do. And I know we mentioned earlier about substitute teachers. It's kind of funny, just in my short time, I've heard kids tell the substitutes, don't forget the backpack, or things like that when I'm going through the hallway. So it, it is important that the kids do know, uh, these drills. Uh, but I think the more we can talk to them and prepare, uh, like I said, from day one, I'm very impressed with the teachers here at Riverside. The, every drill, they grab that, I didn't even know what those backpacks were the first time we did a drill, you know, and, uh, they all had their backpacks and, and they were ready to go, and, uh, we were practicing out on the front lawn, and they were going through the process because they had gathered kids up with them to get them out of the building safely, and they were executing the processes out there. And that's before I was able to dig in, like I've had the opportunity over the past few months.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Thank you so much for your time.
My pleasure.
We know that you're getting together. We have a lot of confidence in you guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casebolt. And the nice thing is with all the levels, I mean, they all communicate with one another too. Uh, Mr. Casebolt, Mr. Abdalhadi, with this EOP plan, with Mr. Awada, look at it from a secondary perspective of us, like you said, trustee Seba. With the fifth graders, it is a little different, and it's a little bit more hand-holding, but the, the teachers, that's their, that's, you know, where they're the, the nurturers in that process.
Wait till you get to kindergarten and fourth grade.
Oh, well, I'll tell you, that's why, God bless these next three women, uh, these principals coming up. Um, so, uh, Mr. Casebolt did mention something that I do want to emphasize. There are certain situations in every building that call for certain needs, and we know, we, we have students who are special need students. So there are individual plans for those students as well, as Mr. Casebolt mentioned. Um, and we take that into consideration. And Mrs. Andrea O'Hara and her team do a phenomenal job of ensuring that those students do have the necessary, you know, resources in order to be in a safe environment. So I want to, I, I want to say thank you to Mrs. Andrea O'Hara and her special ed team for making sure that they're taken care of. So the first elementary principal I'd like to ask to come up is our Kinlock principal, Mrs. Jill Marvesel, if you want to come on up, Mrs. Marvesel, just because you were the first one that I saw when I looked to my right.
No worries. We were rochamboing, who is going to go first?
Who won? I want odds.
Uh, good evening, board, Crestwood team. Uh, thank you again for having us, uh, this evening to talk about, um, this topic of safety and security for our students in the Crestwood schools. Um, Mr. Abdalhadi and Mr. Casebolt did an excellent job explaining, um, the plans that are in place, uh, district-wide. I'm going to piggyback off of some of the things that they've already mentioned. Um, first, I would like to tell, uh, everyone that safety and security is our number one priority for our students. If our students do not feel safe coming to school, we know that learning can't happen. Um, something we do at Kinlock to make sure that our staff and our students are well aware of our safety protocols is the very first day of professional development in August, when the teachers come back to school, we review our plans. Um, as asked previously, uh, these plans are always evolving and changing, whether it's because we're welcoming new students, um, new teachers, uh, whether there's a change in departments. Uh, we always have to think about those things and continuously improve our plans. Um, through the collaboration of our staff at Kinlock, we are always looking at our safety drills as far as the fire drills go, as far as our tornado or disaster drills, and then our lockdown and relocation. Um, with, uh, our drills that we have to do throughout, um, the school year, all staff have copies of all of the drills, whether it's just the procedure itself, um, if it's a map, we have different maps, because for a fire drill, you're going to have a map of the, um, exit doors that the teachers will need to exit out of, where you're going to have different locations for a disaster drill or tornado drill of where they locate, um, with inside the exterior part of the building. Students are well aware of all of these drills that we do and the locations. Um, our drill, um, information as far as the procedures and the maps go are all posted in the classroom. Um, they are reviewed, like I said, with the students, and, um, this goes with Mrs. Fauz, what you mentioned, I believe it was, as far as substitutes. Uh, in our substitute folders, all of these documents from August have been in there. If there are changes in staffing, or there are changes in location of classrooms, as you know, we, you know, add classrooms to our media center at Kinlock, which is a good problem to have, um, but that wasn't on our map before. So those are things that get added, um, regularly, and if we get new students, our student directory constantly needs to be updated so we have information should we ever have, God forbid, as Mr. Casebolt said, an emergency where we have to take out of the building. Um, at the end of each drill, as Mr. Casebolt mentioned about doing a survey for staff, that's something our crisis team will come together and discuss, things that went really well, things we can improve on. Uh, Mr. Abdalhadi said it really, uh, greatly with the word evolve. We're constantly evolving, we're constantly learning from what worked and what didn't work. Um, they're, you know, living, breathing documents that can constantly change. Uh, the drills, um, are performed for practice and collaboration. Uh, we want to make sure that there's, um, the effectiveness and the quickness. We, um, have our students, as, um, Mr. Seba mentioned, you're asking about our youngest learners, you're asking about our youngest, uh, Crestwood students. They, um, they are, they are involved, they are having discussions with their teachers, they're asking questions, but we do it in a way to show that care and concern and not to scare our students. We have picture books. Um, a lot of our, uh, staff has been trained in Alice, so with the Alice training at the elementary level, they have, um, given us picture books that are in our media center. Staff throughout the year have been checking them out, reading about fire procedures and why we do fire drills. They're reading about bad, uh, severe weather that we might have in Michigan and how we, you know, go about protecting ourselves. And we make it, um, non-threatening, um, we talk about it with the students, and we know that they're talking about it at home with their parents as well. We, uh, had a lockdown drill recently, and the students, um, you know, they were asking specific questions for the teachers. So I immediately went into, um, principal teacher mode and gave our staff some resources that they could use in the classroom as mini lessons before that drill happened, because I know that's a drill that could scare some of our students when you talk about, um, threats being in, you know, in a building. But we have that way, and that's where your elementary staff truly come into play, where they have that nurturing side, and we can present it to our students, uh, to not scare them, but to know that they're going to be safe and that they're listening to their teachers at all times. And I think that collaboration between the staff and the children is what makes our drills very successful. Um, in, uh, every classroom, as Mr. Abdalhadi mentioned, all of Kinlock staff had red book bags. They're all hanging, um, right by the door as you would come in or come out of the classroom. In the classroom teacher or the special area teacher backpacks are all the class lists. Um, if I'm a fourth grade teacher, I'm going to have my fourth grade, uh, class list in here. I'm going to have Band-Aids and flashlight. Uh, we have some with blankets, uh, pencils, scissors, it's all in here as far as emergency kits go. Um, we have two, uh, backpacks in the office, one of them being mine, one of them being the secretary at Kinlock. That one's going to have a little bit more of info, uh, more information, because we have our whole entire student roster printed out from MyStar with all of the children's, um, addresses, phone numbers, parent contacts, uh, should we have to relocate, um, which our relocation spot is, um, Crestwood, uh, High School in the gymnasium, and we have our second, um, uh, relocation spot as being the Kenfield Center. Uh, staff knows where the gate key is, um, and they know how to unlock the gate should we have to go across the field. If they were in, um, a lockdown themselves, then we would have to go to location number two, um, them being a school as well. Uh, I think I covered pretty much everything. Any questions?
I, um, you said that you have a crisis team, which I'm glad that you, um, mentioned that. I know every building has a crisis team, and I know that you do, um, trainings quite often. How often are you, you know, getting together and going through the plans and updating and so on?
Um, well, after every drill, so this far, so, uh, this school year, so far, we've done five drills, so we've met five times, um, just based on the drills alone, but then we've met, uh, several other times, uh, preparing our plans at the beginning of the year and, um, revising them as needed. Uh, these are documents that constantly need to be updated based on, you know, if there's a staffing change, if there's a room location change, uh, if we realize that, you know, we have seven classes going out of a door, and that's way too many students, that's 210 students, we might have to make a, a decision to say, you know what, Mrs. Claus's class, they need to go out a different door, and we make those changes, um, because we want to make sure 210 students going out of a door is a lot of students. Is there, is there a better way to get them out safely and more effectively?
Good, thank you. Any other questions from the board members? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Marvesel.
Thank you.
Lots of good information there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marvesel. Um, and President Barry, you did mention, you were reading my mind, I wanted to emphasize, you'll see a common theme in all of these, that it's crisis teams, it's security and safety teams. It isn't a top-down approach where it's one person making all these decisions. It's a team. It's like what we're doing across our district. We have teams and committees, not just for crisis and safety, but curriculum, you know, activities. We, it's a team approach in our district, you know, and then I always say, as a superintendent, I'm here to ensure you have the resources you need in order to be successful. You tell me how to get there, and I'll help you get there, and that's what they're doing. So next, I'd like to invite up, uh, Mrs. Talib. Yep, yep, I saw you next.
You notice what they did is they all sat to that side, so we can't see them, so we're like this. You guys should have sat to that side.
Is everyone, Mrs. Talib is our high view principal.
Hi, everyone.
And turn it over to you, Mrs. Talib, thank you.
I'm just going to place this right here. I brought some examples, sorry. Good evening, everyone. So, um, honestly, Jill, Nastreen, I, Rodwan, Scott, and the entire team has been working since August on these plans, and we recently, um, just met last week during our virtual week, um, just to make, um, some final changes to some of the, obviously it's ongoing, but to, to our plan and trying to make sure that everything is updated. But just like Jill, Nastreen, and Rodwan said, we, each of our classrooms has these two-go bags, and I do want to point out, um, I've been in the district for a very long time, and as a teacher in the district, I received Alice training, and I recently surveyed the staff, and the majority of our staff members are Alice-trained. Um, every single classroom in the district has a to-go bag, and Rodwan, um, sorry, and, um, Ronnie actually shared what was in those bags. I did bring an example of the evacuation bags, and these are not in every classroom, but we have two to three in each building that also have additional supplies, um, in them that we can place either at the evacuation site, or the teachers carry them with them. I know that, Mr. Seba, you talked about the youngest children, but, um, a few years ago at Kinlock, and I want to point this out, since we've been preparing our students for so long, we actually had a real evacuation. And this evacuation took place, uh, we got the call during a PTA meeting, and we received a call that we needed to evacuate the building because there was an issue with a gas leak. Um, at that point, um, Kinlock's, um, evacuation site was Crestwood High School. It was, it was amazing how we were able to get 500 students approximately out into Crestwood High School almost seamlessly. It was beautiful. And the parents were able to come to, to that site to pick up, um, their students, because we knew at that point that we were not going to be returning to the building. So, um, I share this because I do want you to know that the students are aware, the staff is aware, the staff is very trained, and we knew that we needed to evacuate, and we, and we did evacuate. So I just, I wanted to share that information with you. Um, most recently, we had, um, a lockdown drill at Highview, and I invited our SRO to come into the building, and he was able to see exactly what we were doing, and he actually walked up and down the hallways and gave us some feedback as to how that drill was conducted. He did, um, suggest that during our next lockdown drill, that he would also bring an additional officer for, for that drill. So that was actually very helpful. Um, again, we have a crisis team at every building that we meet with, and we do meet after every drill to see what, what we did right and what could change. So obviously, these are drills, and they are very helpful, and they allow us that, to see what changes we do need to make, if, if we do need to make any at all. And most recently, um, we just started sending all our information to Mrs. Senka, where she actually, um, updates our sites to notify the community of our dates of our, um, our drills and when they were completed. Um, so far, we've had three fire drills and one lockdown drill. And our lockdown drill was, went very, very well. Our fire drill, for, except for one, because some of the alarms weren't going off properly, went very well as well. So it's an ongoing process, um, but I know that, um, along with the crisis team, we are doing what needs to be done to keep our, our students safe.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from the board members?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the information.
You're welcome.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Talib. Uh, you know, Mrs. Talib said something that, um, I, I, I apologize. David Green and Kathy and the team and Eric, they're influential in this too, because they ensure that our alarms are working, our systems are working, they update, you know, our, our infrastructure needs in terms of technology. It's a whole team approach. It's not, like, again, like I said, it's not one person sitting in a room. It's the head custodian, the maintenance, the supervisor of custodial, it's, you know, David Green and his team, it's the principal, it's their security, it's a, it's a whole group effort.
Cyber security.
Yeah, cybersecurity, that's, that's another topic, you know, that's, you know, something that we've been trying to keep a close eye on as well. So there's so many aspects to the security process. This is a multimillion-dollar organization, you know, and it's no different than, you know, a major corporation. We have a lot of moving parts. The difference is, we have children, and we have to take it a step further, because we have to nurture our children through the process. So thank you, Mrs. Talib.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, I'm sure I'm going to get grief for this, because she's last, you know, she's going to say, you forgot, and how you made me last, but that's okay.
You still have two. Don't forget Miss Ansonik there.
No, no, I know, I was gonna, no, I'm saying of the, uh, of the K-5 buildings.
Yes.
No, 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 I know we still have Mrs. Ansonik, no, no, I know that. I'm talking of the K-5 buildings.
I was just checking if you.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I got you, I got you.
It's pick-on-yusuf day.
That's okay, please do. I need the humor. Uh, but no, uh, of the K-5, oh, K-4 buildings, uh, Mrs. Nastreen Saad, the principal over at Hillcrest Elementary, if she can come and then talk about. Elementary, if she can come and then talk about her school, because when Emily comes up, she's gonna be really talking about the little, little, little ones.
Fun ones.
Good evening, everyone. Just like what Mr. Abdalhadi said, Mr. Casbolt, Ms. Marvaso, and Ms. Talib, we do have a big process here, there are procedures that have been put in place in our building and making sure that our students are aware as well as our staff are aware of the safety comes first. As whatever they mentioned from all of the above, routine is in place. We've had our drills, we've had three fire drills so far and a lockdown earlier this school year. We've had our SRO officer in the building, has done the walkthrough, has recommended a few things. I will say, I do have a building with new staff members, a lot of new staff members. So our goal is ASAP to have either refresher, a rundown on Alice training, as well as to making sure that our new staff get the full training needed. Currently, they know that there is a bag in the classroom and we did our lockdown, they knew what to do in regards to shutting down. We have shades that we roll up, roll down, lock the door, and there's a certain place in the classroom where they are to stay standing and secure their students. In regards to the fire drill, they know to take their emergency bag with them, out the door, and count their students and check to make sure everyone's secured in their location. The evacuation location we have is here at Riverside and our second location is the Kennedy Library. In regards to basically making sure to making our staff aware, that's something that we are working on together as a team. I do have a crisis team. We do meet, majority of them are actually in our, another team that we have, our multi-tier system of support, MTSS, in the building, so we're able to touch base with one another during that session as well. We have met a few times during that time as well as during the crisis team. I do have a new secretary as well. That's another priority in my building where, you know, you have a leader, but you need someone else, the second person, your go-to is your secretary. And thankfully, she is aware of the school district and the setting and is catching up in regards to the emergency plans that we have in place.
I can say, if the board remembers, you did submit your plans to us in one of your board packets and I did read through that. So I knew that you were, I know you were all working on them, but she did submit them, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, and letting us look through that.
Thank you.
Because I did read the whole thing. Any questions from any board members?
If I could, just for the public, we use acronyms and it's, you know, common day for all of us. So for the community, SRO is a student resource officer hired by the school district and he is a City of Dearborn Heights active police officer. So we currently have two, correct?
One.
One?
One.
One in the school district, you know, in addition to our security. So there's always a officer who's familiar with our schools, who's worked with them, who goes for all these different evacuations so that he can be our ears and voice directly to the police department as well. So I just kinda wanted to, I don't know, I guess I'm the interpreter between everybody to let the community know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trusty Kaminsky's been pulling my weight today, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Saad.
Thank you, Mrs. Saad.
Thank you.
Yes, and you know, Trusty Kaminsky, I do want to say, because I, you know, being the, you know, I think you're the most senior board member, you've seen-
I have.
-the process of the district and yes, you're right. So we're working towards becoming Alice-certified again because we have so many new staff and it's been a few years with COVID.
Right.
So that's the next step in this process, once these plans are approved, is moving forward to being a certified district across the board. And that, that just takes some time. But you still get trained-
Yep.
-but the certification's another level.
Yep.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Now, for our GSRP program over at Cherry Hill, we have our GSRP supervisor, Mrs. Emily Ansenic, if she wants to come on up. Now, Mrs. Emily Ansenic, Trusty Sabo, this is the one that's gonna answer those hard questions.
We want the little people.
She's got the little, little ones. And the nice thing is, as you can tell, there's a common theme, as I said. So if, you know, it's like with anything, even with curriculum, with safety and security, if we're doing the same thing with our GSRP, our youngest, as they go through the K-4 building to middle school to high school, it becomes part of their natural routine. So out of all everyone, Mrs. Ansenic here probably has the most difficult job in preparing these children in a manner where we don't put fear into them, you know. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Ansenic. Thank you.
So to, the most different thing I think our building does to, oh, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. To not scare the little kids, for active shooters, those kind of drills, we tell them there's a skunk in the building. We, you know, what do skunks do? They, they spray, it stinks. Do you wanna stink? No. Okay, then we have to be really quiet and hide. We're gonna hide and when it's okay for us to come out, we'll come out and everything will be fine. This works. We, when we have to evacuate the building, we say, okay, the skunk's inside, we have to go outside. We have to get away from him, we have to hide behind the bushes, we have to go wherever, he's not gonna find us. Besides that, I would say most of our drills are probably the exact same as everybody has said. We do have our to-go bags, I left it over there, same things. We are working on putting ours together for the office. Does anyone have questions?
Well, I, I did wanna say, you also follow strict licensing guidelines-
Yes.
-where you are mandated to have them actually more often than regular-
Yes.
-school buildings. So if you could talk a little bit about that and how you have to report that and how you're audited when they come out. I know that the other buildings have, you have to report it to RISA, but I know she has to report it to the state into licensing.
Right, so we have our forms that we fill out, we, I feel like we're always doing some type of drill in any different circumstance. The, the main drills that really, that we practice the most, I would say, when kids are outside, kids aren't in their classrooms because they're comfortable in their classroom. So what teachers will do is, I know when I was a teacher, I would tell them, wherever I go, you go. Follow me wherever. So it would be a game, I guess, where if I'm going over here, I'll say, oh, there's a skunk in the building and they all know to just come running. We're constantly reporting, we have forms, I have not only this administration to answer to, but a whole nother one at Wayne RISA. I'm sorry.
Where is your to-go-to site for the kids?
So I was just talking to Mr. Awada about this. I believe that it was Crestwood, the first, the primary. I think we're changing it to Divine Child.
I'm sorry, to where?
Divine Child.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've made some adjustments with that this year, looking at the requirements. One of the, there's two things when we look at that evacuation site that I'd like to make clear. Number one, we try to avoid crossing any major crossroads-
Right.
-because we don't know what the situation's gonna bring. Number two, we have to make it where it's a place that the police can block off a large area so that when parents do come for reunification, they're not battling through traffic. So when we look at all these, and then we look, of course, at distance, how far is it? Is it too close, is it too far? So we've already made some adjustments that we feel based on the requirements would work, but when we have the tabletop activities and we talk with law enforcement, looking at, they could say, yes, you know, that's a good spot, this is why, how about this? Did you think about doing it here? So, and that's why this one's gonna be changed to Divine Child, so they don't have to cross beach daily.
Nice. That makes sense. Thank you. Mr. Sabah, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, you did a great job, Emily, so thank you.
Thanks.
Honestly, I'm so bothered by just having this conversation all, all together tonight, but I think we all know emotional, emotional thinking restricts rational thinking, so kind of take our heart out of this and try to protect these kids. And you guys have all done just a fantastic job. I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Because this is a really hard conversation for me to listen to, let alone present. So just great job to all of you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
What was the alternative site? You said Divine Child would be primary, what was the alternative?
Crestwood High School.
Oh, Crestwood.
Which seems to be the popular meeting place, so we might, we might rethink that one too.
Have you looked at whys or discussed with whys?
Have not.
We have not. From when the plans were developed to now, that's an adjustment we would probably have to make.
Right behind it.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, we, you know, that's definitely gonna be one of the conversation pieces.
Okay, anybody else?
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Ansenic.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, guys.
So before we move on, I just wanna thank all of the principals for being here this evening. I know you've had a long day, but I felt it was pertinent that you heard it from the principals instead of hearing it from me, because they're the ones, as you said, that are actively involved. And just so you know, from a central office perspective, God forbid if we're ever in a situation, I go directly to the building, the team goes to the evacuation sites as well as the reunification sites. Moreover, in case of a, an emergency, we turn authority over to the local police department, so Dearborn Heights Police would take over control of the site. And then I, as well as the principal, are there to support them. And then Kristen ends up staying at central office and all communication would go through Kristen and then Kristen would share that communication with the board. Through this process, it allows me to stay focused, to support law enforcement with the principal, where messaging would go through one person. And then Mr. Awada would be working from behind the scenes too, based on the situation. So I wanted to thank Mr. Awada for being here as well and all the work he's done since August. That, that 190 something page document is not easy, but it covers all of our bases and it helps build our plans to be more succinct. So I wanna thank all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry, oh, Mrs. Fawaz, go ahead.
You just brought up a question for me when you said that. When they're doing drills or just in general, have you ever noticed a, for law enforcement and calling the police for anything, and I guess more so would pertain to probably high school more so than the lower levels, response time or anything of that nature with all the schools, not just, you know, our area, but they support, you know, D-7 and Apple, whatever.
I, I will tell you, I give so much credit. Since I've become superintendent, Chief Myers has been phenomenal in terms of supporting our schools. Over the weekend, at night, doesn't matter, he texts me, I text him, we talk. And I shot him a te, you know, we were talking on Friday about Monday and I believe I put in one of my updates, like, we're gonna have additional presence, so on, so forth. So on Sunday, I shot him a text, I said, hey, with this, you know, let me know if there's anything you need. And he's like, nope, got you guys covered, just as a reminder to make me a little bit more at ease, you know, because we talked about it Friday. And one of the things that he mentioned to me was, you're gonna see some of our officers, you're not gonna see some of our officers. And that's what I want everyone to understand, that it's not always going to be the officer in a full uniform that you see. There are other officers there and patrolling in unmarked cars as well, because that's part of the process. And Chief Myers, it doesn't matter when it is, doesn't matter any time, and the Dearborn Heights Police, right away, they, they respond immediately. I have not at any time had an issue once since I've been superintendent.
So no, like manpower shortage, no-
If they're short, if they're short, Chief Myers will tell them, yeah, we're short, but I'm sending. And he'll redirect his, his team to come to our schools.
I'd just like to say thank you to the Dearborn Heights Police Department because that was something that for several years, I, I would attend city council meetings and plead with them to create, you know, to have that relationship between the city and the, in the school district because it's crucial. It's like a very, very important piece to the, the way we function and just the safety and security of our students and staff. So I'd like to say thank you to, to the city and, and I can't wait to see that grow. So, thank you.
Again, I guess I'm gonna be an interpreter here. I need a app or something.
I told you, you're pulling my weight today.
So everyone talked about plans from the classroom. Dr. Masalim, do we have a plan if Suzie and Johnny are in a bathroom or if it's lunchtime?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Trusty Kaminsky. No, there, there is a plan for lunchtime and that plan is literally, I don't wanna go into detail on that.
That's fine.
That's a plan I don't wanna go into detail on.
I just wanna make sure-
There is.
Okay.
And then for, for Johnny and Suzie or Ali and Mohammed, if they're in the restroom, when they hear the lockdown sound, they know they have to get back to their classroom ASAP. Now, before teachers, now this is something I can't say, when the lockdown alert goes, before teachers close the door and lock their doors, they check the hallways. And then you have specific people that are assigned for specific areas of the building for those situations and they know where to take kids and get additional cover. That is part.
That's all I wanted, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Baydu?
So first of all, thank you for the Dearborn Heights Police Department, that's great. But are we streamlining our evacuation plans and processes with the fire department as well?
Yes, of course, of course. They're part of the tabletop activities. Yes.
Okay, lots of good information. Ms. Elzayat?
I just, thank you all. I, I only see Ridwan because everybody's sitting behind him. But I just wanted to thank you all for the hard work. I know that it's not easy to put those plans together and I am impressed, I just, I wanna tell you that, that it is refreshing to sit with people who are actually working on plans and know what an emergency operations plan is, an EOP, and that they actually know that there's a thing called an evacuation route, a reunification site. So just from my perspective, I feel so much better knowing that you all know these things. So I just wanted to say thank you. Kudos to Dr. Masalim, the team, and Ridwan. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
What I wanna say is, I'm really happy to see the partnership we're buil, we're building with the new administration at the Dearborn Heights Police Department because yes, it's a breath of fresh air and we have come a long way and we appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, anything else from the board members? All right. Anything else from Dr. Masalim?
That is all from us, sorry. But I hope, I'm glad it was a good depth of information for you.
We did have a request for closed session. Yes?
I mean, I'd have some-
We, we, I mean, if you want, it's up to you. You tell me, because you're the one that requested it.
Yeah, so is there any, can you do it in our meeting towards the end or no?
Um, it has to be during closed session? I mean, during study session?
I can keep it brief, I just-
Thank you, everyone.
I'm actually gonna ask-
Have a good night.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night, thank you, guys. I'd actually would like to ask, I, I can be five minutes. Okay, that's fine, we don't need to go into closed. I, I just wanted to keep everybody else on the same page.
It's up to you. You're the one that requested it. If you want, we can move into another room so we don't have to have everybody move out.
But actually, I'd like it just to be the board, Dr. Masalim, Kristen would like to join, I don't mind.
I'm not aware, so I don't-
It's not a big deal, it's really not a big deal. I don't, that's why I don't wanna make it, I just had a couple of things and I just would like to-
It's up to you, board president.
Okay, if we can move into the back room?
So you have to have a motion to go to closed?
Yes, motion to go into closed session for purpose of-
Just some, I had some comments that were, I don't know, you wanna say personnel, I guess you could say-
Personnel issue? Okay.